Okay. I'd like to call this Police Fire and Legislative Committee to order. We are here. We are here to discuss two items. And just so you know, we will be reversing them on your agenda. Item A is the discussion of rules and agenda. But we will first discuss the curfew ordinance that we currently have on the books. That again, needs to have a couple amendments that were omitted the first time this legislation was passed. And I think for the most part, it was an oversight. So those amendments, we're here to discuss. And again, of course, if there's anybody on the Police Fire and Legislative Committee, or anybody that has some suggestions for that legislation, or some ideas, certainly, this is the forum to discuss those in. With all that being said, I first wanted to defer to Mr. Zaleski to talk about the ordinance as it exists currently, and a few of the amendments that we are looking at making to this legislation. And I will say that I know Councilman Arroyo is not here, but he was pushing a few of these items because of some of the issues that we've been dealing with. But so I'll now turn it over to Mr. Zaleski.
Well, it looks right now, the current ordinance and what we amended, we did exclude Fridays by mistake. Basically, the current ordinance right now calls for anybody under 17 not to be out between the hours of 11 o'clock and 6:00 a.m., excluding Sunday to Thursday. And on the weekends, they get 12:30 to 6:00 on Saturday and Sunday. We do not mention Friday in there, so we will have to add that. When I spoke to Mr. Arroyo today, he did send me an email that he would like the curfew to be 10:30 to 6:00 o'clock every day of the week, unless with a parent or guardian. And he also wanted an exception in there unless they're working or at school events up to 11:00. But I think the state just passed a law where the children can't work past 11:00 anyway, so I don't know if that's gonna... And I think our governor, he didn't veto that. I can't remember what happened on it, but I think he vetoed that. But...
Yeah, my understanding is the mayor vetoed allowing children to work on school nights.
Okay.
So that's what he vetoed, because they wanted the kids to be out. The governor thought it was better that they be home, doing homework and not being working.
But from this body, I need guidance. What do you want your ordinance to reach? You heard Angel wants 10:30 to 6:00 o'clock every day, unless it's a parent or guardian. Is that good with... I mean, I'll write it up however you want. Now, I passed out a copy of the City of Avon's curfew, and you all shall have that in front of you there. And they go into a lot of detail. I could copy it off of that. You could change the numbers on it. It looks like Avon has the hours of 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. And then on the weekends, it's midnight to 5:00 a.m., I guess. I mean, you tell me what you want in the ordinance, and we'll put it in there, and we'll have it for you for next Monday.
There was also some language in there that just needed to be changed because it was just so vague and...
We forgot Friday, and the old ordinance had Friday reference.
Yep.
And we'll put that in there.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Zaleski. With that being said, I will now go to City Council. Mr. Nutt.
Thank you, Mr. Nutt. I do appreciate that. Is this... You said this is Avon's current ordinance, is that correct?
Correct.
I'm a little more in line with Avon's. I think that I like the 5:00 a.m. I think any kid that age up at 5:00 a.m. is probably a fantastic student, doing something they're supposed to be doing. So, and just in case, I would go with the 5:00 a.m. I don't know if there's a big difference in, I don't know, crimes or issues between 10:30 and/or 11:00, but I would just be more in line with 11:00 and 5:00 a.m. across the board. But, you know, it's not a huge difference, 10:30 to 11:00, but that's kind of where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Freehaski.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I also like where they define who the minor can be accompanied by. Because if we're just saying an adult, you could get a 16, 17-year-old kid running around with somebody who's 18 or 19 and doing god knows what, and they're technically considered an adult. But I do like this where the minor is accompanied by natural or adoptive parent, legal guardian, or the responsible person, and duly authorized to have custody of the minor by the minor's parent or legal guardian. So it makes... It just gives more responsibility to knowing where these kids are at. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. DeWolff.
Yes, I'm looking at the introductory paragraph A, and it specifies Sunday through Thursday inclusive at times when Avon local schools are in session. Would that eliminate the curfew for the summer, since the schools are not in session?
If, again, if we were to, in fact, if that's the wish of this body to adopt that language, remember that language is Avon's. We already have a piece of legislation on the books that governs the City of Lorraine and identifies what that curfew legislation looks like. That's just an example that you could pull and say, hey, that's a good idea. Right? So that does not exist currently in our legislation.
So we don't have that issue with summer being a free-for-all?
No. You should have a copy of our ordinance. Okay.
Your current ordinance is 11:00 to 6:00, 11:00 to 9:00 to 6:00 in the morning. And Mary, to your... Our ordinance does say, unless accompanied by a person of mature years, and said person must be the parent, guardian, or person having legal custody and control of said child. That's in our ordinance now also.
And I personally take issue with the language of a person of mature age. I mean, what does that mean? That just leaves way too much to try to determine the definition of what a mature person of age would be. So that's one of the issues I have with the piece of legislation.
So we have a lot of children who are under the auspices of their grandparents. So if the grandparent had another son or daughter, like the aunt or uncle of that child, if the grandparent gave them permission or had asked them to do this, that would be considered...
The legal guardian.
No, permission of the legal guardian to have this child.
Okay. You good, Ms. DeWolff?
I'm always good.
All right. Ms. Carter.
Thank you. Sorry for being late, you guys. I think we should be in line with the other cities, our neighboring cities, the 11:00 p.m. to the 5:00 p.m. My question is, do we know why Angel was asking for a 10:30 to a 6:00? Was there any reasoning behind it?
I don't... You'd have to ask Angel, I don't know.
Okay. Well, I mean, I would prefer us be aligned with the other neighboring cities because coming from one city to the next city can kind of get kind of confused. I also have an issue with the summer hours, like, because that's when a lot of drama is happening in the summer. I think we need to probably put something in there for the summer.
Would you want to extend the hours in the summer or keep them the same, 11:00 to 5:00?
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Ms. Henley.
Thank you, Mr. Jamakia. I like the 11:00 p.m., but I think 6:00 a.m. is better. And I'll tell you why. For any of us that have insomnia or have been a part of Block Watch, you will see, especially in the summertime, these kids roam in the streets generally between the hours of 3:00 to 6:00 a.m. And I don't know if we can get some information, maybe from LPD, but that's when I see these kids roaming. And what they're doing is, the parents are asleep or whatever, and then they are out of the house up to no good. And that's not all kids. I understand some kids are going to work or whatever, but I'd like to see some information on that. And I think 6:00 a.m., I don't know. I raised three kids, and there was none of them getting up at 5:00 o'clock in the morning to go anywhere. So whether it was sports, or, you know, work or anything. So I'm just saying, if they did, the one, the time he was up at 5:00 a.m., he got in trouble. Thank you.
Ms. Spelcy.
Well, I would agree with Mrs. Carter. I think 11:00 to 5:00, all year. Not like we'll do 11:00 o'clock in the summer and 10:30 in the winter. It should just be a standard 11:00 to 5:00. Everybody knows what it is. And that's what I would suggest. This 10:30 to 6:00 to 8:00 to 2:00 to whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cotten.
Yeah, I would agree with Ms. Spelcy. I think 11:00 to 5:00 across the board, winter, summer. Everybody knows what it is. I mean, it becomes the standard. We're not making the police look at the watch or something like that. And I do have a question. If a child were to be with an 18-year-old sibling, would that change this?
Depends on the circumstances. Is the sibling... The sibling could be considered the legal guardian, but based the way the Avon ordinance is, if you copy that, no, that would not be a legal guardian. The sibling would not be a legal guardian.
Yeah. I think brothers and sisters get in trouble a lot together. I know I did. So, yeah, I think that that's probably best. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say to that point that Mr. Arroyo did say that he would like to have the age of an adult in that language to identify the age of at least 21 years or older, as opposed to 18, which I understand his point, and I don't disagree. So just keep that in mind as well.
And look at the Navons, look at C1. I suppose C1 could fit an 18-year-old brother or sister, would be... Would have control of the child and would be okay to be out with them if you look at C1 and the Avon ordinance. We don't have to copy that. You could define it how you want.
Thank you. Ms. Freehaski.
Yeah, with the further discussion, I do agree with the age of the adult being at least over 21. We're not trying to be punitive, but we are trying to get what is a serious issue under control. And we all recognize that we've got a problem. When we look at what happened over on Emerson Avenue in the shootout, those were young teenagers. And the youngest person that was in that house was nine years old. So, I mean, you had a wide range of kids there and everything, that there were no adults that were supervising this. And that's... We're just trying to make parents more responsible for their kids during hours that they don't need to be out and about. And that's all we're doing. I do like having a consistency of, these are the hours, and it's set year-round. So nobody can say, well, my school got out at this time. I'm not in school during this time, and that, you know, so I should get different hours. No, these are the hours, and it doesn't vary. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. DeWolff.
Yes, it's been a while since I've been a teenager, so I haven't kept up with what the state is saying about teenagers driving at night. I'm looking at number five. For some reason, I had thought the state said that kids couldn't drive after a certain time, or... And I don't know. I'm asking, is this going to be okay with what the state already has on its books?
Again, you're referencing, just for clarity, you're referencing the Avon, City of Avon, curfew ordinance, which is not ours.
I understand.
We don't have that language in our ordinance currently.
Okay. And so you're probably saying we're not going to put that section in?
Not unless somebody suggests it and recommends it, and Legal thinks it's okay and doesn't create a bigger liability for the city. Not to speak for Legal, but... Again, that's just a template of a neighboring city that, you know, maybe there's some good ideas in that legislation, maybe there's not. Maybe there's something that somebody wants to adopt, the whole idea behind this discussions, and make sure that whatever, what changes we make to the existing legislation is what we all think is in the best interest of the city and keeping our kids safe. So...
So I'm asking, excuse me, I'm sorry. For D and E, define whoever. Is that the youth that was caught, or is that the adult that was in violation of this?
Oh, that's for the juvenile.
And what about E?
Well, unfortunately, that would be the adult.
Okay.
You good, Ms. DeWolff? I know you're always good, but...
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I appreciate you taking my questions, because I know sometimes it's hard.
Well, that's why we're here. Thank you. Ms. Moon.
Thank you, Ms. Jamakia. Sorry for my tardiness. What about homeless? We had a young man that was homeless, and he was living behind a building. And he had nowhere to go because his parents had put him out. So he would be over a curfew. So how would that be handled? Besides, you know, I know they pick him up and maybe take him somewhere, but what if he kind of like jumps around and jumps around this person? Thank you.
It's a really good question. I don't know how it's been handled in the past. What I will say is that, you know, our police department is heavily trained and prepared for situations like that, and I would hope that they would err on the side of discretion in how to handle a situation like that. I mean, the whole idea here is not just to penalize folks or put people in jail or cite them, but again, if they're out doing bad things in our cities and they're putting other residents at risk, then, you know, that's why we have these ordinances in place. But that's a really good question. I don't have an answer for, but that's certainly something that we can ask police department, and how they would handle a situation like that, unless Mr. Zaleski has an idea.
Well, they'd have to take that juvenile to juvenile court, and juvenile court would handle the situation. We don't have jurisdiction immunity court here over juveniles. That would go to juvenile court, and they would have to handle it there. And what they would do, I do not practice juvenile law, so I don't know what they do.
Thank you, Attorney Zaleski.
Thank you. Ms. Carter.
Yeah, I think we also need to look at exemptions for kids that are working. I guess you guys may have said this, I don't know, but I can't... Exemptions for kids that are working, because I think they can work till like 10:45. And then also, the school events. Some of these, some of our school events go past 10:30, don't they? Some of the basketball games and things like that?
Oh, no, I hope not.
Or travel? I mean, they're traveling.
I mean, yeah, they travel. Those kids are coming back. But I think the real issue there is, once they get back and they get off that bus, where are they going then? I don't think police are going to be snatching up kids and giving citations when they're on school property, getting off a bus. But your point is well-taken. Yes, sometimes, now that they're in that new conference, there's hour or more trip back from a 7:00 game that they could potentially come back at 11:00, 11:30 at night. But again, you know, hopefully discretion would prevail and common sense would prevail with some of those kids that are coming from a basketball game or an event like that. I will say this, that, again, just thinking out loud, that I think that is the premise behind Mr. Arroyo's changing the time to 11:00 for a simple fact that, you know, you talked about kids working. What is that legal time that they're allowed to work till?
I think it's, was it 10:45, or something like that?
So then, good point, Mr. Zaleski. If you look at C4 from Avon, that might be something that we would think about adopting a portion of that language or that language, because that covers exactly what you are referencing.
Okay, all right. And then also, I wanted to ask a question about an 18-year-old who may be emancipated and taking care of their sibling due to, you know, for whatever reason. You know, the parent dies or whatever. And this is a mature 18-year-old who's emancipated. And how's that handled? I mean, I'm thinking they would just fall into the adult area because they're emancipated, and they probably, and they legally have custody of their sibling.
And if they made legal guardian again, uh...
That would...
They would be legal guardian of that particular minor.
Yeah, they could be, yeah. And there's a lot of that out there, I'm sure. And like I said, Avon, that's why they used the word, or other responsible person who's 18 or more years of age and duly authorized to have custody of that minor child. If that's a brother or sister who's 18, and they're the only ones there, then they are duly authorized to have custody of that child.
Okay, yeah.
Unless Children Services gets involved and places them somewhere else, which that doesn't always happen either.
Right. Okay, that's why I make... I just want to make sure I understand clearly.
Thank you. Ms. Spelcy, your lights on? Seeing no other lights, I will now turn to the public. Any comments, questions, or concerns from the public? Please state your name for the record.
Patrick Crone, 1015 Helen Park Boulevard. You know, I'm all for the new ordinance and the changes, but the question I ask is, number one, is LPD got the resources to do these things? And secondly, what would be the question to these people to have who legally regarded that person? It would be emancipated adult, you know, caretaker, whoever. If these kids go out and do something stupid at those timeframes, and they get picked up by LPD, SO, whoever, what's the commonality to legally guard that parent? Because in this day and age, I don't know what is going on, but these kids think they do what they want. They have no respect for authority. And when they get these tickets, these citations, or whatever's going to happen, consider the fact that who that person is who serves for that child is penalized as well, because they're responsible for that child. And as long as the child's to be penalized for what they're doing wrong, because otherwise, you go back out and do it a second time, and keep on doing what they're doing.
Thank you. Any other public comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, I will go back to City Council. And again, as we work through this discussion, if you do have recommendations or suggestions, this is the time to voice those so that we can make sure we make whatever amendments we need to make. The idea is to bring this back to council as amended, with any changes that we feel are necessary. So with that being said, Ms. Moon.
Thank you, Ms. Jamakia. Okay, I have a child. And this child's acting up, and I keep getting tickets, tickets. So how many tickets am I allowed? Because being out there, like the gentleman said, it's pretty rough out there with kids not listening anymore. When you have, you know, the drug problems within the community with parents and kids are out at night going to the store. I have a neighbor who walked from Walmart to his house on Toledo Avenue because he didn't have a ride. So that means he was out and about. So how many tickets would I get if my child act up? And I'm constantly punishing them, disciplining them, telling them right from wrong. But you know, a hard head makes a you-know-what. So what do we do when it comes to that? Because a lot of people are asking me that, you know? How many tickets? Will I go to jail for five, six? So, you know, maybe we can answer that for me if you can. If not, I thank you.
I mean, that's a question for the courts and judges, to be honest with you. Yeah, I don't know. Come here, Bradley.
So right now, the ordinance makes it a minor misdemeanor. And the new ordinance makes it a minor misdemeanor. So the most you can get is $150 fine. And right now, if you get cited a million times, the most you can get is a $150 fine. So if you, you know, I think council may want to look at it and say, hey, how many times do we want to allow a parent to get cited for curfew violation before we have some kind of meat on the bone, so to speak? In other words, do we say a third time results in it being elevated to a fourth degree misdemeanor? And maybe then, you can carry up to 30 days in jail and a $250 fine. And the person, of course, gets to go to court and explain why their child has violated curfew. And I'd say within a year. You know, in other words, I mean, we're doing these ordinances, and the law department is proposing these ordinances because we're trying to address young people committing crimes of violence, gun crimes in our community. This is the purpose. We're not trying to punish young people who are out on a date. We're not trying to punish young people that are out there, going to a basketball game and coming home. What we're trying to do is put the light on. Your child is out there for no good reason, possibly carrying a firearm or a weapon, or out there looking for trouble, and the parents are just saying, I can't control my kid. Well... I mean, if, I don't know, in the schools, if you can't control your child, the schools kind of have to assume that responsibility. Well, I think we as a city, if parents can't control their children, we have to do something to make sure that there's some control. So I'm asking council to look at possibly making it, you know, a third offense or a fifth offense, whatever it is. If you've been cited for having your child violating curfew three times in the same year, maybe you need to have a little extra hanging over your head. I'm not saying that the judge has to put you in jail, but maybe the judge will say, hey, this is your third time. You've been in court this year for violation of curfew. We're going to suspend 10 days in jail. Now, if you come back the next time, well, then the judge can impose that jail and also impose jail on the fourth offense. But, you know, this is all to try to do what our citizens have been complaining about, and that is crime within our community, many young people committing crime. The other thing I wanted to bring up, since I'm standing here with the microphone, is if you're going to give somebody permission to be in charge of your child after curfew, I think the parent should have to put it in writing. So I think it should read... And for some adult duly authorized, I think it should say duly authorized in writing by said parent, by said guardian, to have control of said child. So because I know what happens. The child gets cited for curfew. Then the person who's with the, you know, whoever is with the child says, well, the parent gave me permission. And the parent goes, oh, yeah, I gave him permission. Have it in writing pre. That way, it's in writing that I've got permission. I got it in my pocket here. The parents gave me permission to have control of this child. I'm 21, they're 17. I got permission, you know? Have it in writing. That way, the police aren't harassing anyone. It's all, you know, parents gave it, gave it. So think about those two things. That's my suggestions. And I'm not trying to offend anybody. I'm not trying to get the wrath of God to come down on me because I've made a suggestion. We're just talking. We're not, we haven't passed anything, you know? We're just trying to talk, you know? I think that, I think the debate, as we said, debate is good. Hate is not good. And I don't want any council members to ever feel intimidated because somebody writes them a nasty email or letter about something that they're considering for the good of this community. You know, you were duly elected by the citizens of Lorraine to do the things that you're doing. And it's not an easy job. And it's not an easy job, but you shouldn't have to feel fear or intimidation from somebody who is supposedly exercising their First Amendment rights. Yeah, you have a right to give your ideas and your thoughts, but I don't want anybody to ever think that they have the right to make you fear or be intimidated, because that's where your freedom of speech ends. So we're not going to be intimidated, we're not going to be put in fear. We're going to do what we do in this chamber, which is to speak our minds and have a good conversation, which I think we've had, thoughtful conversation, but we're not going to be intimidated, and we're not going to be placed in fear because we're trying to do the right thing for our community.
Thank you, Mayor Bradley. I will say this, you know, based on those comments, I know I got a couple more lights on. Uh, I, I would hope that the accountability legislation that we put in place would eventually, uh, assume the role of those multiple issues that you have with curfew with parents, right? I mean, that's one of the reasons why we drafted that and pushed that legislation that, you know, hopefully, uh, if it is repeat offenders and they become a nuisance to our community, that, uh, then that, you keep in mind that, that parent accountability legislation should be in play at that point in time, just saying. Um, but I don't know legally how high we can take this up to be a fourth-degree misdemeanor. I, I don't know, that's something that...
Well, as the mayor said, if it's a third offense in the, in a year, you could maybe bump it up to an M4. But I'm going to put my two cents in. I mean, we could legislate all we want, this is a problem of society. We have laws on the book now that says you shall not drive drunk, people still drive drunk. We have laws that say you shall not steal, people still steal. We could put this in the law, but I mean, it's a society problem. I'm not going to say this is going to cure it. It's something you can try, but it's not going to cure it.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Wall? I just want to remind, uh, thank you, Mr. Demakio, uh, remind people about the conversation of the eighteen-year-old versus, um, the twenty-one-year-old. Someone had suggested putting twenty-one years in, then if you have a older sibling, as someone mentioned, that's eighteen, um, you know, that would make, that would change what they're able to do. Just wanted to remind you of that.
Thank you. Ms. Riegowski?
Yes, um, I've received a text message from Mr. Awayo. I have screenshotted, I have sent it to the clerk to be entered into the record so that we are all above board and we have the sunshine laws in place. And what it says is, I'm watching online, I'm still at the airport. I'd also like to have an adult not just be eighteen, but age of twenty-one and older. I support twenty-one and over, no siblings twenty-one and over unless they have legal guardians at the age of eighteen or nineteen or twenty. And I'm fine with eleven PM as well, to be honest. That was a normal time, but I went with ten-thirty so that we could get the discussion going. Those, that was coming from Mr. Awayo. He does regret not being able to make here, make the meeting, but, um, his flight was delayed, so, and, and things like this happen. And I also wanted to, um, thank the mayor for what he just said, because, you know, he's absolutely right. And I know from my perspective with what I've gone through here on my tenure on council, I appreciate the support more than you can know. So, sir, thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Ms. Carter?
Yeah, if you'd share, um, I also want to thank the mayor for his comments, um, regarding, you know, this is a conversation and that we should not be intimidated and that we have the right to speak and, and share our ideals. Um, that, that is appreciated, especially with what has been happening within the last few years, uh, with some of my colleagues. Um, and when you read things, it does kind of, kind of, it kind of keeps you from speaking and sharing your thoughts. So I appreciate that. Um, the next thing is I want to say, we talked about, um, the consequences. Well, in school, truancy, we have a, we have, there's consequences for being truant. Um, I think that maybe we should, could look at some of the truancy consequences, because I think they only have up to, um, thirty or more consecutive hours of truancy before intervention steps in. And really, that's what I think these parents need out here, is I think they need intervention. Um, and that's probably something that would happen on the court side of things. But we're dealing with, um, young, young parents, um, who are not parenting. Uh, and so I think consequences, um, you know, the first one, like you said, is a minor misdemeanor, but as they continue on, I think that some kind of intervention would be helpful to the parents and for those parents who are having some difficulties with their, with their children. So I'm not exactly sure how we could set this up. Maybe we can look at the truancy laws and then kind of come up with our own kind of, you know, late, um, curfew. Because I think when they're, when they're out, they call the parents anyway. So, but we are dealing with a big, um, with a huge drug problem out here, and there's many parents on drugs, and they don't even know where their kids are at. So, but I don't want to penalize a, a child and he carries that, you know, on his record till he's twenty-one. I, I'd like to see that we try to do some kind of interventions for them and for the families first. Just my thoughts.
Thank you. And I don't want to speak out of turn, but, uh, to your point, I do know that there have been discussions with the administration, uh, Laurin Police Department and Laurin City Schools to discuss truancy laws in an effort to try to get control of it at a local level. I will say this, that the school district does a great job with interventions, programs, working with parents, trying to get them the supports and help and resources they need. Uh, but truancy is an issue. The bigger issue is we have no control over what happens when it becomes an issue, uh, because we are dependent upon the county to handle that situation. So the discussions, and again, I don't want to speak out of turn, but the discussions are around how do we localize it and how do we put it in our local municipal court, uh, to handle with, handle our truancy issues here in collaboration with the school district and the police department. So, um, to be determined later, and it's, I'm pretty sure it's coming. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Wall?
Yes, um, I'm wondering, with the grass issue, there was a concern between civil or criminal citations or tickets or whatever. Is this a, a criminal act?
Yes.
So people would, if they're found guilty of the misdemeanor, there is an actual record? They go to court and do the whole thing?
Yes, but if it's a minor misdemeanor, minor misdemeanors are not criminal per se. If it's a third offense within a year and you make it an M4, that would become a crime on the record, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moon?
Thank you, Mr. Demakio. You know, I think this is all wonderful, but sometimes we forget about the students. I think we should get together with the students and listen to them to see what's really going on, because being in the school system, you know, I hear so much, and I hear a lot of Miss Moon, Miss Moon, social media, there was someone on the phone last night, they're going to fight today. So sometimes maybe we should get the students together and say, you know, this is a law that's going to be coming out. You need to get ready to get yourself together and respect whoever's taking care of you. So this parent or whoever is won't be going fine and all that. Sometimes they need to hear what's going on. So it'd be nice if we can get a group, you know, and say, hey, these are the new laws that's coming up for parents, you know, you need to get, get it together if you've got some issues, this is where you need to go, but we need to listen to them. We as adults know what's going on, we know about the shooting, but being in that school, listen to children, it's really something that goes on. You can only spend a day at Laurin High School where they're in the office crying or a problem or somebody didn't show up, or the child is getting the sister and brothers ready that five and six-years-old for school. So let's kind of get the kids together to see what's really going on out here far as the guns, the drugs, the why are you late coming to school, you know? So just, just my suggestion.
Thank you. Mr. Wall, you ready to talk?
Okay. I think that we have a pretty good foundation for some of the changes that, uh, have been suggested here. Uh, the plan is for, uh, Mr. Zaleski and our law department to draft, uh, those amended changes to the current existing legislation. I would say though, from my part, I would like to see some kind of language from C4 from the Avon, uh, ordinance. Uh, I'm not sure I like to back half of that, uh, Article Four, because I don't know how you're going to govern that or police it, but, uh, I like to, like the beginning language in Four, C4.
And let me sum this up and correct me if I'm wrong, if what I'm getting from council, our time is going to be eleven o'clock to five AM. Uh, you want a responsible person to be twenty-one or older unless they're a, a sibling who has legal custody. Uh, you want duly authorized in writing with this person, as the mayor said. Do we want to enhance it for the adults if there's a third offense for their child within a year?
Yes.
Make it an M4?
Yes.
Okay, and then Tony said here the C4 language, I'll look at and figure that out. I will have something in writing, have it down to you by Thursday, and then you'll be on the agenda for Monday.
Thank you all. That was item B of our agenda. Actually, uh, I'm looking at your dinner to both a...
I guess I'm not wrong.
Um, yeah, we can, I mean, it's hard because we don't have the drafted legislation in front of us, um, but if all of you are comfortable enough with our law department to draft up the changes, uh, we would have to send it to council.
The curfew one?
The curfew one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I would need a motion to send the drafted revised version back to council for consideration. Ms. Emily?
I will make an motion.
Do I have a second from Victoria?
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand. There we go. Correct, correct. No, that's okay, you could raise your hand. All right, moving on to the next item on our agenda, discussion regarding the proposed ordinance, uh, discussion regarding rules, council, and our council agenda. There have been some discussions amongst, uh, council folks, uh, about our council rules. Um, and I will reference a few of them because some of them have come through here. Um, part of the discussion is, uh, identifying media credentials within our chamber, uh, just like the state of Ohio does, uh, in adopting what the state does, uh, for credential media folks. Another part of the discussion, and I guess it might be even easier to go through, uh, the rules individually, we could rapid fire this. Rule one, I have not received, uh, any, uh, recommendations, and if you have anything that you would like to see changed, uh, rule two, nothing, uh, rule three, nothing, four, five, and six, nothing. No amended changes on any of those. Uh, the section where officers and employees of council, um, there's a question of, do we need a sergeant-at-arms, uh, in this chamber? And, um, comments on that? Ms. Riegowski?
Yes, I would say that we need a sergeant-at-arms as much as we need a, as somebody designated as a parliamentarian, which they would be the ones that would, um, advise as to the correct procedures under Robert's Rules of Order, and they can be utilized, um, somewhat in, um, a de facto sergeant-at-arms in keeping order. I mean, you would, you would hope that the council president would be maintaining that order under Robert's Rules of Order. Um, but I, I don't know that we need the sergeant-at-arms as much, because, I mean, what powers would they have? We already have the police in attendance, and we have the Ohio Revised Code. So like I said, parliamentarian versus, um, sergeant-at-arms. Thank you.
This might be a stupid question, but I was going to say the same thing. Uh, don't we already have that with our council president? And then if there's a legal issue, we certainly have our law here every meeting to advise, but I just, I, I hear what you're saying, but playing devil's advocate, don't we already have?
I understand that. I, I think that people are not as familiar with Robert's Rules as I would hope that they would be, in that what is the purpose of the council president in this? And it isn't to give an opinion or it's to cast a tie vote, but it isn't to, to have commentary, it is to facilitate the meeting. And when you facilitate a meeting, you're not actively a participant in it, you are guiding it. And I think that we often lose sight of what that is in this case.
Uh, yeah.
Under Robert's Rules of Order and parliamentary procedure.
Yep, I understand. I, I get it. Uh, so you would like to see a broader definition of the presiding officer, i.e., uh, council president, and what their specific role actually is and define it a little clearer than what we currently have in our rules?
I think it would alleviate any confusion, and it would facilitate the process going forward and keeping us purely within the guidelines of Robert's Rules of Order and proper parliamentary procedure. That's just my suggestion on this.
Fair enough. And I, I will, uh, as far as the legality of defining what that role is of an elected official, I would defer to legal on that. But, uh, Mayor Bradley, comment?
A lot of times people don't understand this, but actually, the president of council is an administrative officer. He is not, or she is not, a member of city council. And so that's a statutory position, it's defined as part of the administration. Now, he's an elected official, so I don't have any control over him, but he's, he's not a, a member of city council. The other thing that I wanted to point out in, in Rule Six, it says, "He shall preserve the order and decorum at all times." Now, to me, once I walk into this chamber, all times means, once I walk into this chamber, if the council president tells me to sit down, I sit down. If the council president tells me, be quiet, I, I'm, I'm going to be quiet. He's like the judge in a courtroom as far as I'm concerned. So I, I say this, once you walk into that door and the council president is sitting at his seat, whether you're in session or not in session, or you're in recess, or you're not in recess, I think your rule is very clear. At all times does not say just when the meeting is in order. Now, if I'm wrong, I'll be corrected by the law department, but it seems that we have people giving opinions as to what at all times means. But to me, I think we just take a common sense approach and say at all times means at all times. And so if he tells me something, even though I'm an elected official, even though you're elected officials, if the person who's in your rules is running this meeting at all times, I'm going to listen to him. And I hope that you would listen to him, and I would hope that the people that come to our meetings would listen to him, because that's what makes a meeting, um, a good meeting. And that's what we have in a democracy, right? We listen to rules. We like, we like rules, we like decorum. That's why this council has been so effective, because you listen to the rules. You've, you've passed some good ordinances, you've debated these ordinances, you've been thoughtful about these ordinances. And I think that that is what makes a democracy so strong and vibrant, is that, you know, you, you, you invite people to come up there and give their... you invite people to come up there and give their opinion, whether it's at a council meeting or at a committee meeting. They'll cut them off unless they get off the topic, or they're doing something that is impugning somebody else's integrity. Your rule says that you're not supposed to do that. But I like this rule that the council president, at all times, makes sure that decorum is followed in this chamber. As far as I'm concerned, I consider this chamber to be as sacred as a courtroom. You know, I spent 43 years of my life in a courtroom, and believe me, if I didn't respect the judge who was elected, even if I didn't think the judge was right, or she was right, I had to respect it. Councilwoman Spelis, she worked in the court system as a bailiff. Believe me, she knows that if the judge tells you something, you're gonna listen. You're not gonna get into a debate, you're not gonna say you work for me, you're gonna just say, "Yes, your honor. Well, I think it should be the same way in this chamber." This is a sacred place. You guys are making the laws that control the citizens of our city, but you're also protecting the citizens of our community. And we need to emphasize these things. We need to be proud of what we are attempting to do. And we do our best every single day. So I'm proud of all of you, I'm proud of all those elected officials in this city that are trying to do their best, and we can take the criticism, believe me, because under our constitution in Ohio and in the state, in the United States, we're, we're subject to criticism, and we certainly take it in. But again, there's limits, and I just want you to know that I do appreciate what you do for the citizens of the city of Lorraine every day.
Thank you. Mr. Rawls?
Yes, I had, I almost got lost. And Rule Nine.
No, we're still on Rule Seven.
Someone mentioned a sergeant-at-arms, so we're on seven?
We're on seven.
Oh.
Presiding officer.
Thank you. I will wait.
Thank you. To the chair, I agree with the mayor that I don't see anything wrong with Rule Seven. The seat, we respect the seat as the council president. I was always taught that, you know, that is to judge, you know, you listen to what he has to say. It's a seat, and you respect the seat, and that's what, that's what we will continue to do, is respect the seat. I do have a question regarding the parliamentarian, and what that looks like. Is that an appointed person? Is that, you know, what's the legal, you know, or is that, or are our main law directors, are they our parliamentarian? I know at one time, our safety service director, he was acting as a parliamentarian. So what does that look like? And I guess that probably is a question to council-at-large Mary Spindzowski. What did she, like, explain to me what that looks like?
Ms. Frigowski?
It would just be somebody who is keeping track through Robert's Rules of Order to keep the, the meeting on track, which is basically, a sergeant-at-arms in a meeting is somebody that's keeping order. And I don't know how we would, in, in the terms of a sergeant-at-arms, I don't know how we would be able to have somebody appointed as a sergeant-at-arms. I mean, they're, they're certainly not gonna be able, if somebody's being disorderly in the audience, they're certainly not gonna be able to remove them, that's why we have the police present. But like, there was the question with a meeting that we took a recess, and the question came up as a recess versus an adjournment. And at, at that point, a parliamentarian would say, "Meeting is merely in recess, it is not adjourned, so therefore the council president is still in charge of the chamber." And just clarification on Robert's Rules of Order, which is what governs city council meetings. So just on that, I mean, I'm not the one that brought up a sergeant-at-arms or that, but I don't think that we can use sergeant-at-arms in this avenue here. So I suggested that if you really wanted somebody to do, do something, it would be more as a parliamentarian in keeping the order and that. But it doesn't matter to me one way or the other. I'm not doing it.
Yeah.
I'm just putting that out there right now.
I'm not sure how that would exist with the current council president, but again, I trust in our law department, and any legal opinion that I need as far as Robert rule or rules of order, or anything that we do within a meeting, that's why these guys are sitting here. Their job is to make sure that legally we aren't going out, out of bounds on any of the discussions that we have. So again, I just simply brought it up, it was a suggestion by somebody. Again, I don't know how that would even make sense for us, since again, we have a law department that is here every meeting, and we have a council president whose role is to facilitate and make sure that we are, his job is to preside over the meeting, and keep us on track and keep us focused. So parliamentarian or sergeant-at-arms, I personally don't see how that would even exist in our current structure.
Okay, okay. And I just want to say also that all these years, up until recently, Rule Seven has worked. You know, I don't know if the devil's just dropped out of the sky or what, but it has worked all these years, and up until recently, so.
If we don't feel we need to change, then we don't need to change, but.
I'm, I'm good with what it is right now, and I'm good with our law department, as long as we have someone from the law department in their seat at our meetings.
Thank you. Mr. Riley, did you have a comment?
To the chair, I would just say to council that in the 15 years I've been here, there's never been a finding of any violation of your council rules. And so, I mean, the need for a sergeant-at-arms, I find, in my personal opinion, as a citizen here, that to be unnecessary, you have the police, and you have a president of council. And as to a parliamentarian, you have rules of council, but Robert's Rules of Order only supplement your rules. They are not precedent over your council rules, since your council rules are first, Robert's Rules of Order, wherever it is that your council rules are absent. As I said a moment ago, in the 15 years I've been here, I've never, I can at least say in my recollection, there's never been any filing by any authority, the state of Ohio, a court, or otherwise, that you've ever violated your rules and not applied them properly. In this atmosphere that we live in today, where political rhetoric is escalated beyond what I think to be proper, certainly these issues become more paramount. But nonetheless, they've worked, and we have, as you know, dealt with conduct in the chamber that might otherwise not be appropriate. We have provided for you as a law department, the protocol. I wish you are to proceed, in the event you find yourself in that circumstance, and I would say to you that that protocol is one which I drafted and created based upon input I received from this law director of the city of Cleveland, so it's not something that just came out of my imagination. We faced much more difficult circumstances there, involving disruptions in our council chamber, particularly at the onset of the Israeli Gaza war, when both the Jewish community and the Palestinian community were demanding action by city council, and essentially took over council meetings that mattered, proceeded to the courtroom. I mentioned the city of Cleveland is found to be vindicated, not having by any of its rules and its attempt to control what they developed a protocol. Then when we began to experience here, circumstances that were unfortunate as regarded political rhetoric, and heightened attitudes expressed through the mic and otherwise, I contacted the law director's office in Cleveland, asked them how they handled their situations. He provided me a roadmap, and I drafted it in tailoring to our circumstances here in the city of Lorraine, all of whom are chairman of the committee and are sit in the chairman's chair here, the president's chair. I know what that protocol is, so I feel comfortable that we are in the proper place. We have attempted, on more than an occasion, to train our, our committee chairs and the president on the use of that protocol, if he finds it to be appropriate. Councilperson Spindzowski has properly identified the difference between a recess and an adjournment, and I recently experienced that here in our chamber, which was unfortunate, frankly. And I feel comfortable with where you're at with this particular rule, and would suggest if you're inclined to change it, that we have a further debate about it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Nutt?
Thank you, to the chair. Yeah, I don't necessarily see a need for a sergeant-at-arms or a parliament hearing at this point in time, as stated, but I did want to go back to the, the point that the mayor was making, which I do agree with, that the president or pro temp should have control of the chamber at all times. My only question with that is, what is the mechanism to then enforce the conduct, let's say, in chambers when we're not in session? Because I believe Rule 47's language only discusses when the meeting has been started, so if that is a thing, that the president of council controls the chamber at all times, that may then have to be looked at for them, him to have the, or to have the ability to have some recourse, if that is needed, because you can't adjourn the meeting if it's pre-meeting and there's a disruption, just as a, you know, informational thing, if that's a route that's taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Emily?
Thank you, Mr. Demakia. Over the years, and this may not be the appropriate time, but in referring to council president, over the years, I've had people ask me, and I don't really have an answer for it, so I wonder if it should be part of the rules. On occasion, okay, if I'm understanding correctly, council president's position is to facilitate the meeting, and essentially break any tie votes that come up, and maintain some decorum while in chambers. Now, on occasion, he has offered his opinion on something that's coming up to vote, and that's where the questions have come from a couple of my residents. Should he be commenting on this? Does that need to be in the rules, or is that a "doesn't matter" type of thing?
Really good question. I mean, again, it's, it's really the role of the president, and again, I'll defer to the language of what the president's job is to do in, in our meetings, but it's not to engage and influence in a voting process, that's the rest of our jobs out there. So if that is something that you would like to see language in that particular rule, again, I will, as I always do, defer to our law department, and if they feel that is appropriate, they'll drop some language up and, and place it in there.
Thank you.
Moving on to Rule Nine. Mr. Rawls?
I'm just getting ready to comment on Rule Seven. I would hate to see us redraft something that's already perfectly clear because of one person's behavior. You know, maybe a conversation with that person, because we're gonna have to live with it, with this the rest of the time for everybody else. And I got a little confused because she told me we weren't talking about sergeant-at-arms, then everybody started talking about sergeants-at-arms, and I'm, so I don't think that's necessary. I think Bree does a great job of keeping us on track with rules and regulations from Robert's Rules of Order. I was particularly impressed with her last meeting, where she did advise the president that something that had been voted down could all, all, only be reconsidered by someone who voted on the opposing side. And that is a very, very, that's, that's good, that's good. She knows her stuff, and so I think that a sergeant-at-arms, if you wanted somebody to do that, you'd expose them to civil and criminal charges if, if somebody says they did something, or whatever. So I don't think that's necessary. I would like to see Lorraine continue to be as folk-friendly as it is, without us having, I know there are some times when you need exact rules and regulations, but I don't think it's always necessary to start listing what a person can do, what he can't do, in part of your document. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cotten?
Yes, I'd just like to say that I think that Rule Seven should stand as, is, I don't see that we're, you know, I don't think that this is the biggest problem as maybe other people do. It's been working for a very long time, and I don't see any reasons to change it. Thank you.
Thank you. Rule Ten. I will say that the one suggestion I got from Rule Ten is standing committees, the recommendation is upon a chairperson vacancy, meaning chairperson is absent or cannot attend that meeting, the vice chair will be asked first, and then order of committee members before opening up to other council members to chair said meeting. I personally don't have a problem with that, I think that's the way it should be, and I think that's been the precedent from Bree, as she navigates through this type of issue at times, but I think she's done a pretty good job of making sure that the vice chair is the first call to facilitate that particular committee meeting in the absence of the chair. So that's my two cents. Open it up to the floor, Ms. Frigowski?
I think what she may have been referring to on that was a vacancy, a permanent vacancy on the committee, where, like, when.
You're talking about appointments.
Yeah. I, I think that that was what that was in reference to.
And again, I have no issue with going immediately to the vice chair of that committee, that's why that vice chair position is there. Any objections to that type of language? Perfect. Mr. Riley?
What's the language? I'm clear about what it is that has just been discussed. Are you talking about the absence of a chair, and who might fill it, and the absence of a chairperson, or how it is that these chairs get filled to begin with?
Permanent vacancies. So in the event that the standing committees have been selected, you have a chairman of that committee, that chairman is permanently vacant, it should go to the, the request to chair that committee moving forward should go to the vice chair, and then down to the other committee members if the vice chair is not interested in doing so, until, before we go and reach out to other council members. Thank you, sir. Rule Eleven, committee meetings. I have a note here that suggests that, which committee meetings are a public meeting anyway, and are designed to be those meetings that public comment on particular legislations, no different than today, right? It's, a bulk of this meeting is giving the community an opportunity. The suggestion is during public comment, should we require name and address? And we already talked about the address issue, I think, in regular meetings. And then should we put a cap in committee meetings, two minutes or three minutes, just like we do in regular committee meetings? I, I say that we adopt what we currently have in regular committee meetings, or, excuse me, regular council meetings. I think that has worked out fairly well. Ms. Frigowski?
I think that the length of time that people speak and how those committee meetings are governed should be up to the chairperson of that committee. I know that when I chaired Building and Lands, I didn't put a time limit on, and I didn't put a limit as to how many times people could come up and speak. The meetings didn't get out of hand. I think that they were relatively well-run, and that, and it continued to work, but I do think that it should be the option of whoever the chairperson of that committee is. That is their committee, they are the chair, they should decide the rules as to how long somebody can speak and how many times. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rawls?
Yes, I agree that citizens should be allowed to come and speak. I'm, I'm a little confused about sup- I'm a little confused about, suppose the Building and Lands Committee has two minutes, and then the federal programs and state programs has four minutes, and then I think it should be uniform. I personally, I don't think there should be a time limit put on it. I think a person should be able to speak, and unless it gets unruly or exceedingly long, and they should be allowed to speak as many times as they please. Just public hearing.
Don't disagree, but I'll just caution you that, and when I was on the Board of Ed, we put two hearing of the publics on our agenda to allow for folks to speak because we do want to hear them. But I will caution you, if you don't put limitations on it, what you will have is you'll have one individual dominating that committee meeting while others, and what happens is, and I know it, if you have a group of people here that want to speak, they get exhausted by listening to one person sit up there and talk for a half hour and dominate the room, and then they don't get their opportunity to come up and speak. And then you have people leaving before they can come up and address their concerns because we're just letting certain folks dominate that particular part of the meeting. So I would just caution you on just opening up. We haven't had any issues to date. I don't recall having to cut anybody off. I don't, just like today, you know, not many people get up to speak, which is great, but in the event you have a hot topic in committee, you can't allow a few folks to dominate the conversation in the room and take away from others in that space that have some legitimate concerns. So I just want to say that.
I understand that. So if there is a time limit put on it, I think it should be sufficient for a person who really has a big concern or plan, and then it should be across the board for all the committees. I don't want to have to memorize which committee I have two minutes on and which committee I have five minutes on.
I agree with your consistency, but again, it goes back to the individual running the meeting as well. You know, if I want to let somebody talk for 10 minutes because I have nobody else coming up, I mean, if you run the meeting and you run it efficiently, you don't have those issues. But I do agree, consistency should be at least noted in somewhere in our rules. And I'm going to Ms. Carter.
Yes, through the chair. I agree that we have had, we've done well with our committee meetings and the, you know, having the community speak. However, I'm thinking, and this is just a thought, taking over 10 minutes probably should probably be put in writing, because then it becomes a conversation, right? When you're, the, yeah, it's, you have, you have a lot to say if you're up there for more than 10 minutes, and then to me, it requires a meeting, a meeting with the administration, something. Because that's a lot of information to sit up and listen to someone for 20 minutes. And then we also have the hijacking of the meeting. So not that that has happened, but to put some parameters in there, take some consistency for every meeting, I don't know, I mean, whatever our body agrees with, 10 minutes, 15 minutes, but anything beyond that, I think it's, I would say it's, it's probably time for a sit-down.
Again, my suggestion would-
That's just a suggestion.
I do agree that we need to have some uniformity with our meetings, and that's why I suggested earlier that we adopt what we do in regular council meetings. Again, I think you just leave it to the discretion of the chair of that meeting to allow somebody to speak for 10 minutes, but I certainly don't want to put in writing, you get 10 minutes because then, you know-
Then you're violating people's rights to speak.
Right, I think we just adopt what we do in regular council meetings. Again, just my opinion. I do have a few more lights to that I do want to get to.
So is there a disclaimer that we can put in here that if it becomes, you know-
We're violating our rules. So disclaimer rule, I mean, if we want it to be a rule, let's define it as the rule, and you know what I'm saying? We're the body. This is our meeting. We govern our meetings based on these rules. So if there's something we want in here, let's talk about putting it in there, but I don't think we need to put disclaimers out, you know, I mean, just my, this is our meeting.
Well, I don't want to violate anybody's right to speak. I'm just, you know, I don't know what we can do. I mean, because like, I want to respect the person that is up there speaking, and I want to hear what they have to say, but if it's longer than 15 minutes, there's, there's, there's got to be something more to it. Like, there needs to be a conversation, and it probably doesn't need to happen here. It needs to probably go to the administration to find out what is the real problem.
Ms. Captain.
Since our council meeting is two minutes to allow people to speak, my thought is if we doubled it and allowed people to speak for four minutes, and the chairperson would then have the ability to extend that per what was going on. If you have a roomful of people where everyone wants to speak, then it's four minutes. If you have some, you know, one person shows up to a committee and they want to speak longer, and it's not a, an issue with the committee or with the chairperson, and they extend it, I think that that's their purview, but I think saying four minutes in the rules is a, is a good sort of medium ground, so to speak. Thank you.
Fair enough. Thank you. And I will say, as I go on to the next individual, that, just keep in mind that we don't need to offer a hearing of the public in our regular meeting, and that's what committee meetings have been designed for, that truly is the hearing of the public and gives them an opportunity to speak. And I'm not suggesting anything other than, but just keep in mind, we didn't need to put that on our agenda, regular agenda, but that's what committee meetings are for. Moving on to Mr. Nutt.
Thank you, sir. Certainly appreciate it, Chair. Yeah, I understand the use for possibly setting time limits on this. When I run the meetings, I have no time limits because I want people to get out the full thoughts and breadth, breadth of whatever they're, they're trying to say. Obviously, consistency has to be key. So in my opinion, I wouldn't set a timeframe on there. I would leave it up to the chair. That way, it's, you know, if two people want to talk, great. Fifteen people want to talk, the chair is running the meeting. It's up to them. Because I think if we set that time limit in there, and if any chair deviates from that, then you have that issue of, oh, this wasn't fair, and I didn't get to speak, and they got to speak more from committee to committee to committee. So I think that might create a problem. But to your point too, that the committee meetings are essentially like the working meetings, like the general meetings where we're just supposed to do our business and pass ordinances, legislation, legislation, whatnot. As a side note too to this, the emeritus council meetings, I don't know if anybody's ever attended those. I've attended quite a few before, but just one recently as well. The way they do their meetings, I find quite unique. So they're very speedy, and they just get their work done. Their meetings are about four to five minutes. Now, the reason for that, though, is because their subcommittee is when everything is introduced. So like here, everything comes onto general counsel for whatever item, the ordinance that needs to be passed. Well, all of those shuffle through the corresponding subcommittee to where then all questions, comments, concerns are all answered, and when it comes to the official work of council of passing these ordinance, it's yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, and they're just moving right along. Because obviously, we have an issue with the timeframe on our regular committee meetings. Now, that is something that's a little more, you know, that's a full change of the structure on the back end in a way, but that's just a thought to put out there, because the point of the subcommittee meetings is the back and forth, the dialogue, the question and the answer. So that's why, to me, I think not having a time limit is best, leave it up to the chairperson, but also the way they run their meetings allows for, you know, when council is in session, they get their work done, and then they're done, vote gone. So just as a point of reference. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I'm not advocating for time limits on folks in committee meetings. Don't get me wrong. You know, I mean, I just suggested simply for a foundation that if somebody does go rogue and they're dominating the room, you at least have that rule in place to say, hey, listen, you've surpassed your four minutes. I've allowed you 15 additional minutes. I'm going to need you to wrap up so I can let other folks talk. So it just creates a foundation for you. Playing devil's advocate, I think we got a lot more work here than emeritus does. I would cautious us on putting everything in subcommittee as opposed to council floor, but I love your point. Mr. Wall.
Yes, there was an incident here where one of our citizens got up to speak, the two-minute bell rang, and the, someone moved to allow her more time. So that's the way it was handled, you know? So I think that's a perfectly good thing. So if you put a limit on, if you don't put a limit on it, and a committed chairperson tries to shut someone off, all hell is going to break loose. And so the, that chairperson should have the authority to stop someone if, after, by whatever minutes, because the committed chairperson needs to have the backing of these rules. Okay? So that's the way I feel about it. And if, if someone wants to move that they hear more from him, so be it.
Mr. Biden, just to let you know, professional growth on my part, I wanted so bad to cut your mic off in the middle of saying that.
With the word "hell"?
Ms. Pringowski.
Yes, I do like adding in the name and the address that must be stated, otherwise I think that the rule should stand as it is. I'm very pleased to see that four of our new council members are here. I'd be interesting, hello, I'd be interested in hearing their viewpoint on it. You know, I agree with Mr. Nutt. We didn't ever have time limits, and we didn't have a problem in ruling somebody out of order, or saying that, you know, when you come to a committee meeting, you're only allowed to talk about what is the topic on the agenda for that meeting. It has to be germane to the conversation. So, you know, many of us that have sat in that chair, we don't have a problem in keeping that, and that's part of our job as chair of the committee, is keeping the order of the meeting. And it may take a little effort and that, but we know who our bad actors are, and we can't hold the rest of the city hostage because somebody is trying to hijack a meeting. And somebody may have some very salient points that they need to get out there, and I don't like putting in, you know, a time limit because you know that these people are going to hold everybody to it. I say we let it stand as it is, as it is, let it be at the discretion of the committee chairperson, and we know that it has to be whatever is on the agenda. You can't be going off, you know, ad hoc on this and just stipulating that they have to have their name and their address stated in this at the beginning for the records. I think we would be good to go there. That's just my opinion on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything on Rule 12? Mayor Bradley.
Let's skip around a little bit, but first of all, you do have the right to control the time, place, and manner of somebody speaking to you. So that's not infringing upon anybody's First Amendment right by controlling time, place, and manner of their speech, okay? But you've put limits on your own speech. So if you look at Rule 22, speaking, when called upon by the chair, no member shall be allowed to speak for a period of longer than three minutes at any time unless permission is granted by the presiding officer. So if you're going to put limits on yourself, I think it's a good idea to put some limits on the public. All right? So you put a three-minute limit on yourself, and then it says the discretion of the person running the meeting can extend that if the person is making some cogent arguments or some cogent points that you think need a little bit more time. So I agree that you put limits on yourself, why not put a limit on the public, give the chair the right to extend that at the chair's discretion?
Thank you. Rule 14. Rule 15. Not much you can do about that. Rule 16, I do have a few folks that have reached out with some recommendations, and I will say this, that based on, again, Mr. Nutt's point earlier about a neighboring city council, as well as I know Bree has done extensive work with the law department in looking at other cities surrounding us, what their agenda looks like. And I do, I'll go off the recommendations that I currently have for our order of business. If there are any thoughts, questions, concerns, or ideas of how it should be changed or not changed, I'll go by your lights. Order of business, number one, pledge of allegiance. Number two, roll call. Number three, minutes of previous meeting. Number four would be combined five and six correspondence and reports from directors, boards, and governmental agencies. Eight would then be number five, public comment. Nine, committee reports. Ten, ordinances for second and third readings. Eleven, committee calls. And then thirteen, adjournment. That has been the suggestion to condense our meeting down so that we can get through the business that we need to get through. Thoughts, questions, concerns? Ms. Pringowski.
Yeah, no, I absolutely agree with this, because a lot of times it just segues into from one into the other anyway, and this lets us get to the business at hand, which is running the city for the residents of Lorraine. So I'm in agreement with this.
Thank you. Not at this point in time. We'll get to you all here. Page six of our rules, still under Rule 16, public comment guidelines. There is Item D. Speakers must provide their name, address, and topic they wish to comment on on sign-in sheet. We've been suggesting to add that on, just a sign-in sheet. We're not asking them to announce it. Their name, yes. We'll know their topic based on the sign-in sheet. Bree usually handles that fairly well. We're just asking to add on, on sign-in sheet to Item D at the end of that sentence. Ms. Pringowski.
No, I agree with that. I think it's important, and also with the sign-in sheets, you probably haven't gotten to it yet, though, I think that people should only be able to sign up once to speak.
Name, yes. Address, yes. Thank you. Ms. Carter.
I agree with Councilwoman Swenzowski one time.
Thank you. Ms. Captain.
And I would also agree.
I also have on here Item F, to add in, speakers will state their address at the beginning of their comments, engage in civil discussion through the chair, and refrain from personal attacks, violations result in removal from the chamber. So the addition there after speakers will state their address at the beginning of their Ms. Pringowski.
Yeah, I think this is important, that they need to make sure that there's, that we know where we can contact them at, you know, if it's, if they're, a lot of times when they come up here is because they have a problem, and if they want us to address it, we need to know how to get ahold of them. And stating their address, it helps us figure out where they're at and where to go from there. And we need to have it stated in the rule, because we get people that come up and want to be contrarian and don't want to give us the information that is necessary in order for us to address their issues, because at that point, it just becomes a complaint session. And that's, sometimes that's all people are interested in, but the majority of us here on council, we actually do want to resolve these issues.
Thank you. Law Director Riley.
Just for information's sake, I came in a little bit later because I had other things I was required to do today, but I think House Bill 609 currently being considered by the General Assembly has been discussed?
No, not here. Has not yet.
Okay. All right. Council is aware of House Bill 609 currently being considered by the General Assembly, where they are discussing the- Currently being considered by the General Assembly where they are discussing the, uh, possibility of mandating for local governments, how it is that they shall conduct their meetings. Anyone generally aware of that initiative in Columbus? If not, I, I would suggest you take a look at House Bill 609. In House Bill 609, which has not been passed but is being debated and considered, one of the provisions in House Bill 609 that is, uh, at this point in time in the dictator, the House Bill says as follows. Every public body by rule, and this is designed to address local, uh, governments such as municipal corporations which Lorraine is. Every public body by rule shall do all the following. And I'm gonna segue down to item number three, which says as follows. Allow for public commentary and testimony before taking formal action on any item that may provide reasonable restrictions on the length and nature of the public commentary and testimony. Rule shall not require an individual to register or obtain approval to comment before commencement of the public meeting. The rule may require that an individual provide the individual's name and contact information before being granted permission to speak. So, uh, here, the, the identification of this person so that he may be, he or she may be followed up on is phrased as contact information, not necessarily address. There's a distinction there. So just for information purposes, the way by which a person who makes public comment now being considered under House Bill 609 is by way of his contact information, not necessarily his address.
Thank you, sir. And I personally have no problem with somebody not announcing their address. I know it's been a conversation in the past, so. Mr. Wall?
Yes, uh, it was, in that, uh, that was what I was gonna bring, uh, to your attention. Uh, the way our society is now, there may be some repercussions for people and things they say and they, if they have to state their address, that leaves them open to, uh, all sorts of things. Uh, contact information, can that, is there, I don't remember what the slip looks like. Is there a phone number on their sign-in? That should be sufficient. If they have an issue, that, that should be sufficient. I think, uh, putting your address out on, uh, internet is, could be dangerous to some women or it could be dangerous in different ways.
Thank you. Ms. Yack?
Thank you, Chief Judge. Just, just for, so for, for clarity. So when they sign up, they're gonna be required to put their name and contact information, which could be, right, phone number, maybe email, or proper possibly address if they want to. But when they speak, it will just be their name? Is that correct? Is that what we're looking at? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Saying no other lights. Moving on. Yeah, no, I was on, I was just reading the last, but we've already addressed it one, once for meeting. Uh, anything on 17? 18, absences, pay schedule. Voting by roll call, Rule number 19. There is a note here that says, could we address minutes here or in Rule 41? Which I was trying to get ahead of it. Yeah. That's, uh, I think we can address that in 41. Anything on 20? 21.
Let's play statute.
22. 23. 24, 25, or 26? Rule 27. Uh, attendance required.
Yes, sir.
I believe, uh, in discussions, we cannot require auditor or treasurer to attend. Uh, so that needs to be amended there because it states, uh, the mayor, safety service director, law director, auditor, and treasurer. So just so you know. Mr. Nutt?
Sorry. Thank you, Chief Judge. Yeah, I had a question about this, uh, earlier and my memory could be a little cloudy on this. I thought the Law Department issued an opinion on that regarding the treasurer and the other. Sir?
Chief Chair, I, I mean, I'm not in a position to say what I may have issued an opinion on in the past. And so I'm going to have to go back to our, we keep them back as far as I've been here before I've been here. But just as an observation, I don't see how the legislative branch can command that anyone in a different branch of government do anything, frankly. So whether it just be the auditor, treasurer, or any executive officer or someone from the court system be mandated by the legislative branch to be present. So I'll, I'll have to relook at this a bit. I ask for counsel to give me some time to reexamine the issue here, but it doesn't pass the smell test that one branch of government can, can command another branch of government in theory to do anything particular. Do you follow?
Yes, I did. Thank you. That's right. I thought, yeah, the original statement had stated, so I didn't have to verbatim change because the mayor can't then be forced as well, yeah, so on and so forth. Thank you.
Yeah, so based on the information we get back from the Law Department, that, uh, Rule 27 may be removed. Looking at that now, uh, 28. 29. Measures to be in writing. Ms. Fiegowski?
Personally, I don't think it's necessary. I, I just think it's redundant.
Yep, agreed. Uh, recommend removing 29. If there are no objections, just for the notes. Rule number 30. Rule 31. Uh, the only revision I have in that is middle of the paragraph where it says a charge of five cents per copy. Uh, I suggest we do five cents per page. Uh, copy could be a thousand pages. Uh, so that would certainly help manage that, but, uh, that would be my recommendation. Any objections? Moving on. Rule 32, audio/video recordings of council meetings. Ms. Fiegowski?
Yeah, I'm concerned about the cost associated with this, given the budget going forward and the fact that we get so many complaints that they, that the video isn't good or the audio isn't good or it's cutting out or it's buffering or what have you. And, um, unless there is a legal requirement for this going forward, I don't think that we should be doing it because we're not in a position to get new equipment at this time. And it's gonna continue to be very frustrating for everybody. And, um, I just, it's, it just seems to have caused a lot of problems with, they can't hear, they can't understand. And, um, we, we just, we need to focus until such time as we can get the proper equipment and the proper transcription equipment that'll allow for the ADA compliance and that. We don't need to open ourselves up to not being in compliance by offering something that we, we can't deal with it right now. That's just my thoughts on it.
Thank you. I don't disagree and I have no problem, uh, supporting that. I will say this, that, uh, live streaming was never, uh, taken, that portion of what we do for our meetings was never, there was no action ever taken on that. That was just something that former clerk, uh, Nancy Greer, uh, implemented on our own. Uh, I think that was a result of COVID, to be honest with you, uh, in trying to be accommodating through a very challenging time. Uh, so technically, uh, that's not in our rules. It's not a requirement and, uh, this body doesn't necessarily have to take action on that, just for the record. Mr. Wall?
Explain to me what you're saying.
We livestream our meetings.
Yes.
On the internet.
No, um, about the, um,
I don't wanna get into that.
Audio and video recordings housed on city-owned equipment. Are, are you saying that we don't need to keep that?
No, no, no. I think there's a difference here. Audio and recordings are required. So that's our record. Right? That's where we get, well, not we, unless Maggie's got a mouse in her pocket. That's where Maggie gets her minutes and records them off of those audio recordings. Those are required and we will continue to do that. The, what's in question is the livestream, which is separate of that. Actual live video that we feed onto the internet for folks that.
Yes, Mr. Demaki, I know what livestream is.
Just checking.
So you're saying no more livestream?
Yes.
And the justification for that is that the audio is bad, it cuts out, it buffers, et cetera?
No, I mean, we have no legal requirement to livestream anything. Uh, and this body never took action to livestream in the first place. And it does cost the city money to livestream, uh, every one of our meetings, so.
What's an example of how much it costs the city?
Oh, I, I don't know what the membership or the, uh, fee is to do that every month, um.
But the livestream, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, you're good.
Okay. Uh, the live streaming does permit citizens to see what's going on at the, at the, what do they call it when you're right there?
It's kinda, eh, what?
They see what's going on at that time. In real time, that's what I'm looking for. Is that, is that, uh, the service that we provide to the citizens now? Even though council did not authorize it?
That's what we do, but there are a lot of issues with it because people can't hear. If you can't hear, there's no sense in watching because most of what we do in here is, you need to hear what we're talking about and what the discussion is. And if they can't do that on our current platform, then it defeats the purpose in even doing it at all. It's great that they can look at a video of us sitting here, uh, having conversations, but if you can't follow along because we don't have the proper technology in place, uh, kind of defeats the purpose of doing a livestream.
Anybody else?
I got a couple lights if you're done.
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Carter?
Yes, thank you. Um, I agree that if legally we don't need to livestream, then we need to just strike it. It's not beneficial to anyone when it's buffering and it's cutting out and it's just causing us more confusion. Um, and so, and, and at this time, we have a budget that we really need to watch carefully. We all heard it. Um, we're good right now, but we really need to watch it and we don't need to be spending additional funds on something that we are not legally, that legally don't have to put money into. Let's focus on what's at hand right now. Um, and keep our recordings so that our, our minutes can be taken care of. If someone wants to know what happened in the meeting, then do a public records request and request the minutes. Or call the council person. Or come to a meeting, I mean, I'm sorry, but we don't have the funds right now to be investing into new livestream equipment. Maybe in a couple years, we can revisit it, but right now, let's see what we legally have to do. Um, and, and that's, we already, um, used that system because of COVID. I, I remember that being implemented, then putting this equipment in. So we don't, we don't need it.
Thank you. Ms. Felicity?
Um, I, I really think if you take that away from the citizens of Lorraine, uh, you're gonna really open up a can of worms. They expect it. Uh, some people like to be part of the meeting, but they can't get here either because of health reasons maybe, or they don't have a car or, or whatever the situation is. But I think to actually take this away is really gonna be detrimental to the, to the council. You're gonna get a lot of complaints because people do watch it and they, and they like it. And I understand the, we had discussed this about how badly the system works, but at least it's there for them. But if you just take it away, I, you're gonna have trouble. Thank you. Does this, one more thing. Would on-demand still be on there though? If we didn't livestream it, could they still go on the next day and look at it on-demand? It'd just be gone?
Correct.
Okay, well, I think it could be a real problem.
Yeah, they can always request audio.
But the audio is so bad, we always discuss that so. And now they're gonna have to do more, um, public request, request of cost. Because you know that'll come next, everyone will want to get, so it might really remove you just to leave it like it is. I don't know what the cost is. I mean, if it's thousands of dollars you're paying a month for that. But, huh? 10,000 years, so it's like $900 a month. Right? 10,000, 12 months? Yeah, so it's something I think the city, I mean, I'm not gonna be here, but I know as a citizen, I do like to watch online. I do like to watch the on-demand the next day. So I would really think seriously about this before you take it away.
Thank you. Mr. Wall?
Yes, um, my only concern is, and Ms. Felicity said it so very well. In this country, we lack transparency. And so the idea of, you know, immediately you cut it off, there's gonna be a conspiracy si, uh, um, theory that, the mayor didn't want us to know what's going on or this, that, and the other. For $450, $450 a meeting, uh, it's just an idea of transparency. No matter how bad it is, at least they know the city is willing to put their business out there online. So that's, that's my feeling about it because we need to be aware of the fact that transparency in this country, in this day and age, is very important.
And, and I don't think the issue is eliminating transparency. I mean, we're not changing how we conduct our meeting. I mean, our transparency is within this body and, you know, whether we livestream it or not to the 10 people that might watch it a month, uh, you know, again, I don't know if it's worth it or not, but I don't think anybody wants to eliminate the transparency of this body and what we do.
I didn't say you did. I said that's, perception is people's reality. And, and that's all I'm saying. And I'm not gonna debate it.
Ms. Compton?
Yeah, I, I, I have to agree with Ms. Felicity and Ms. Duval. I, I think that definitely more than 10 people are watching. I believe that even a bad stream is better than no stream and not taking something away that people have come to be able to get used to for whatever reason. I, I don't, I don't, for $400 or $500 or $900 a month, um, I think we're cutting off our nose spider face. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moon?
Thank you, Mr. Demaki. I agree with them. I, um, when I was at home ill, I would livestream it and it really helped me out a lot as a council person. And I have a lot of my seniors, like Ms. Pye and different ones, will call me up and say, hey, I, I can't get to the meetings. Can you, um, come over and help me get on livestream? And I do that. But it helped me a lot as a council person when I was at home ill to, even though I'm not gonna be here next year, but, um, I would still like to be able to livestream and watch. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fiegowski?
Yeah, the problem is when we talk about the conspiracy theorist, when it buffers and it goes out, oh, they must be talking about something they don't want us to know about. And so you, you're gonna get that. So we're gonna be damned if we do and damned if we don't. And with this budget going forward and the fact that there isn't a legal requirement, and then we started doing this as, as something that arose out of COVID. And it honestly, given the things that have happened in the past several years since COVID, it's actually started to create more problems than it has resolved. And that's my position. I wouldn't be sorry to see it go. And I have used it in the past and I've gone back and I've re-watched meetings and that, but God knows, there's enough people that attend these meetings that are livestreaming it anyway that it's all over the internet and their livestreams are much better than ours. Just saying.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, I was gonna say, if we decide that we're gonna, uh, keep it, I think we probably need to put a disclaimer on there that we are not responsible for the, uh, the, uh, um, for the quality of, uh, the mics. the, uh, um, for the quality of, uh, the mics in the livestreaming.
Technically, we're not responsible for livestreaming at all.
Right.
It's just not required. It's not a legal requirement.
And then, you know, and maybe this is something we revisit at budget time to see it, you know? Because we were throwing numbers out there, what it costs. We actually really don't know what it costs.
Thank you. Ms. Emily?
I don't, I don't think we need it. I'm, this is just my opinion. Uh, the couple times that I had surgery and I couldn't make the meeting, I was more frustrated trying to get it to where I could hear it, where I could see it, it buffered this, and finally, I was so frustrated, I could have cared less what y'all were doing. But, you know, and that being said, you know, there's still, as, as Mrs. Springowski said, a lot of people showing parts of the meeting or all of the meeting. And we have newspapers, some of us still read them. Um, thank you, Carissa. And, you know, I think, and way back, Craig Fulton was mayor, and I was coming to meetings. So, you know, that's the best thing to do is, um, or call your council person and say, hey, you know, here was the agenda, I saw it online, what transpired? That's just my opinion. I won't be here either. But, um, I think sometimes creates more unnecessary issues than it is good for.
Thank you. Rule thirty-three. Uh, the only suggestion I have in here, submission of agenda items for regular meetings shall be submitted into Agenda software by 5:00 PM on the Wednesday before a regular meeting, unless deemed necessary to change by the council clerk. Emergency items submitted after. Any issues with that language being inserted in there? Perfect. Ms. Duval?
What did we decide on thirty-two?
We, we don't have to decide anything.
Oh, I thought we had to.
It's not in our rules. That part of it has nothing, none in our rules. So there's no action this body needs to take technically. Nope. Nobody, nobody did anything. That, what we do with our livestream has nothing to do with our rules. It is not a legal obligation. Like, there was no action taken for that to happen for our meetings. This body did not vote on it. There was no action taken. So if, if eliminating livestream, I'll defer to Law Department. If that's what, uh, the majority of council wants, then that's what we'll do. Uh, but we don't have the majority of council here. Uh, so that conversation can't happen without council folks because they're, they're not all present. Uh, but technically, there's no action we need to take. It's not in our rules, it's not written anywhere, it hasn't been adopted by this body. Uh, there's nothing to eliminate because technically, the livestreaming doesn't exist for this body. But, uh, it is in place now, and it will continue to be in place unless the body wants to eliminate it. Uh, but everybody's not here, so this evening, we're not doing anything with it. Ms. Nutt?
Yeah, I just turned my loud. No, no, thank you. I was just going to say that, yeah. And correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, this means essentially just like an informative opinion finding meeting because the rules will be voted on by the new council next year. So if that is added in permanently or just, but correct, that's just, opinions is what we're getting here tonight and just ideas, right?
Yeah, we, there's, we are looking at amendments to our, or elimination or revisions to our council rules. And when, uh, based on this discussion, when, uh, we have a new drafted version of it and it comes to council, then council will vote on it at that point in time. But correct, this is an ongoing discussion about our rules and any revisions or changes that you might want to see. Ms. Carter?
Just a question, due to our legal team. Um, suppose the body wants to add the livestreaming because technically it's not legally in our rules. Um, it's just something we provided as a courtesy. If it goes into the rule and the livestream is not working properly, are we setting ourselves up for illegal actions?
Mr. Riley?
Well, through the chair, we have to research the issue. So these opinions are hard to give off the top of our heads. But if you have a rule that says you're going to do something, I would suspect that you'll have to do it. So I think the conversation as a citizen that I've heard, which isn't significant, is the cost factor. It's not the cost at this point in time of the monthly subscription. It's how much it's going to cost to put in a new system before I think council should be spending money that it may not have. So I would say, as a citizen, not as a law director, I would like my council to know whether it's doing budget-wise before it takes action to do what would be, as we always complain about as executive officers, an unfunded mandate. Do you have the money to buy a system that can properly communicate to the public what it is that you're doing here? As a citizen, not the law director, I would expect you as council to understand what your budget appropriation will require you to do before you make your final decision. Thank you.
Yes, fair. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, uh, in thirty-three, we need to change the, in the last sentence of the last paragraph where it says utilize the registration button, change registration to subscribe. Because there is no registration button, it's a subscribe button. Hopefully everyone's not seen any likes, I guess we're good with that. Rule thirty-seven. Thirty-eight? Thirty-nine. Onto miscellaneous rules. Rule forty. Violation of the council rule. Rule forty-one. Other rules, council chamber. I think there's some editing changes that are suggested here in, uh, the way this is typed out in our rules. We want to bullet point it so that it clearly, uh, shows the rules underneath forty-one, uh, so it's not all bunched together, just a little bit of alignment, uh, suggestion. Um, and then in the paragraph or the sentence where it says, "No person other than members of Lorraine City Council's staff or other city officials shall enter the designated area beyond the bar of the chamber assigned to elected officials." And we want to remove after commencement of meeting and put at any time. Any issue with that? Mr. Nutt?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, yeah, so i- in this part, is this where we could address the issue of the minutes being fully or summarized?
Yes.
Okay. I regret, yeah, okay. So I'm not to cut you off, I turned my loud on so when you were done.
No, I'm glad you brought that up, yes.
Going through, but I mean, I, I would, I would suggest that the minutes are a summary form of that. And then also, I did have a, a quick question about the, uh, OAG Sunshine Law Training. Now, obviously, I think, I think we all took those classes, but I think that you were able to designate one of the clerks to take some of them for council members? Am I misremembering that? Is that a thing that was, did occur in the past?
The revised, yeah, the revised code allows you to designate somebody to attend on your behalf.
In my opinion, I, I think we should, I guess if, if the, if the revised code says you can designate somebody, I think as a council, we should just make every council member attend and not necessarily designate somebody to take the course for you, but obviously we can't overwrite Ohio Revised Code, but that would just be my suggestion for that. Thank you.
So just, so we're clear. Mr. Nutt's, uh, suggestion is to, uh, look at a summary of our minutes as opposed to verbatim. I personally have no issue with that. Uh, also, he is talking about the certifications and training that are required. Um, I think there is a suggestion that under that training, uh, which would be a bullet point, it would read something to the effect of, "In accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, council members shall attend the Ohio Attorney General Sunshine Law Training." That would be another bullet point under that area of that rule as well. Um, and then I, I don't, uh, in the last sentence, there's a question around the BRIT PERC Training Module, sensitivity basics, two sessions of diversity, one session. Uh, the question is, do, is that something that we should even have in there? And, um, Ms. Springowski, last one?
Yeah, um, I like the, well, I do like going to the summary minutes, just the summary rather than verbatim, um, as that can cause too much complication, especially with our wonderful sound system. Um, and with the training in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, I think we're only required for the Sunshine Law Training, and I think we should have it adjusted at that, whatever is required. And I take it anyway, but I don't have a problem with designating somebody to take it for other council members. I do encourage everybody to attend it or to take the training themselves personally. But if the, the law allows us to designate somebody, then, you know, I'm going to defer to the law.
Thank you. So just to be clear, your, your suggestion is to remove the last, um...
Correct.
Last sentence after General Sunshine Law Training?
That is correct.
Period, and the rest of that removed?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Duval?
Um, I just want to say I agree with Ms. Springowski because we don't even know if diversity is going to be allowed in Ohio.
That's not funny. Sad. It's true, but sad. Uh, rule forty-two, conduct. Yes, sir.
I see the number two in there before council members. Does that mean that that's item number two in that paragraph? Or does that mean that two council members must attend? Says two. And I know there's been somebody who's saying that council members are not following the rule, but when I read the rule, it said two council members. So we can find two council members that attended the training, but I think they complied with the rule. Maybe you wanted to delete the two? But the clear rule says just two.
There might be a typo. We could catch it. Yeah. Good catch. Rule forty-two. The only revision I have is in that first sentence where it says appropriate propriety of behavior, conduct, conduct or appearance. Um, and the suggestion is following rules at all times and adding that, uh, to this. Conduct or following rules at all times while in the confines of the council chamber. I don't have any problem with that. Anybody else? Perfect. Uh, last paragraph, same rule, uh, where it says, it's just a repeated, says in addition, in addition, we want to remove in addition. Which shouldn't be a problem. Uh, Ms. Duval?
Yes, does this cover committee meetings, executive meetings? Uh, this profanity, this racial, ethnic, genders, is, is this in here that at any time a council person does anything like this? The way I'm reading it, it's just in council meeting?
You can't, I, I don't know if you can...
Okay, and so, um, so once, okay, you say at any meeting, okay, then go to the, um, third paragraph, the last meeting. The member, the member violating rule forty will be provided with an opportunity to address the verbal and written warning against him at the regular, um, meeting. It says a member may be expelled for the remainder of the meeting after he had been notified of the violations against him or her via the verbal warning. If, if this happens in a committee meeting or in a executive meeting or work session or whatever we're doing, will that member be expelled for the remainder of the meeting?
No.
Okay. Can we make that official?
Well, I, I could be wrong, but I believe council will have to vote.
I didn't say that. It was, it says, "This written warning will be read into the record at the next regular meeting." Is that done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and, um, so I'm looking for, confused here. The written reading warning shall be read into the record at the next regular meeting. And then there's in addition, with the concurrence of a two-thirds affirmative vote of the legislative authority, the member may be expelled for the remainder of the meeting after have been notified, after having been notified of the violation against him or her via the verbal warning. I'm a little confused. It's a little foggy for me. The offending, uh, member is going to receive a verbal warning at the meeting?
At or before, but notice that.
Uh, this events occurs during the meeting. Does he get a warning then? Does he or she get a warning then?
I would assume that, again, that would go back to the president of council, controlling council, but, Mr. Riley?
Too much, uh, this issue came up once before. I wrote a lengthy legal opinion addressing how it is that this should be dealt with. And I would agree with, uh, Mr. Wall that these two rules, forty and forty-two, do seem to be a bit inconsistent. My recollection of the proper process, when a point of order is raised, as it was in the prior circumstance, the president should then make a decision. Council has the right to review at its own motion the decision. It's effectively an appeal. The person who is charged with violating the rule has an opportunity to speak, and an issue should be decided right there. That's paraphrasing from my recollection, which is years ago now, what that legal opinion says. I will pull that opinion out and circulate it amongst council, but it, but it appears to be a little bit of a, there appears to be a bit of inconsistency between rule forty and rule forty-two as to what should happen if a person violates a council rule. My recollection is that when asked, I did, uh, default to, uh, Roberts Rules of Order. And Roberts Rules of Order, in my opinion, are relatively clear. Issue brought to the president's attention by a point of order call, he then decides whether a violation has occurred. Council then acts as basically an appellate, uh, body, reviewing the action of the president. And then council effectively makes a decision. So I will, I will bring up that legal opinion circulated to you. And I would suggest that you give the law department an opportunity to reconcile what is in rule forty and in rule forty-two so that it isn't confusing and contradictory.
Okay, and, and I just want to make sure I understand. We're in a meeting. Joanne makes an offensive remark to me. The president then intervenes, president council intervenes then?
Mechanism in Roberts Rules as long as a point of order. He, someone declares that there's been a violation of the council rule, and at that point in time, he then addresses the violation, makes a decision. This body then can act as an appellate review, call it that, a review of the president's decision, and then vote to decide whether he was right or wrong about it.
Okay, now, uh, you got to remember, I'm kind of slow.
I remember.
The president makes, uh, someone calls a point of order and complains about the behavior. The president either says it's a violation or not a violation. And then the members of the committee can vote on whether or not they're going to overrule the president or where does the verbal, where does the, the written warning come in?
She's my grandmother, ain't no written warning. She gives a warning.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Yep, and then council, if it wishes to hear the decision of the president of council, you can do that. You'll, you know, the evidence given, the accused member can make a statement. My, my recollection of paraphrasing my legal opinion, just like a little hearing, so to speak. And at that point in time, council will be charged with deciding whether or not he, he or she did or didn't violate the order, the rule rather, and a decision will be made. The penalties include, if I recall correctly, being expelled from the remainder of the meeting. meeting.
So we take out this part where it says an offending member receiving a verbal and written warning from the president presiding officer detailing the infraction. So it just can be a verbal, doesn't have to be a written?
They are a bit inconsistent, but yes, it can be verbal only.
So we need to take that out, the written?
I will look at these two rules, and I'll be sure they're consistent.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there anything for rules 43 through 47? I have none?
Yeah, so, um, with the, uh, the use of electric devices, I have a suggestion. I think that personal devices, because at the beginning of every single meeting, when the president says to, um, silence your personal devices, um, we have given, um, a city phone and a city computer, we don't have to have our personal devices, um, out, because depending on what you may be texting, or you may be using, it can be confusing to, again, anybody who might be watching, or anybody who might be here watching. What are they doing? Are they lobbying each other? Are they having a meeting outside? Whereas if you are using your city phone and your city computer, that are giving us off the table. So I, I believe that as we are asked to silence the phones, or, or our personal electronics, they actually need to be put away. So that's just my thought.
Mr. Riley?
To the chair, over the past several years, we have attempted to educate council about the use of their private electronic devices and the creation of public records. With addition to that, we have had opportunity to speak with council about the conduct of an open public meeting, use of electronic devices to communicate with one another on matters that might otherwise affect your deliberation on an issue would not be proper. You cannot do that. So exactly how it is you used to manage yourself, you know, there's no question here, in my opinion, that the veteran members of council understand these laws. Uh, we've had no lack of opportunity to interact with council about how it is you communicate during an open public meeting, but certainly the notion that you would have a private electronic communication device and be communicating in a way that would not be, uh, otherwise disclosed to the public, and, as it might affect your decision on voting on a matter of legislation, would be improper. There's no question about that. That's one on one with our council members. So whether you want to manage yourself by saying you shall not have any, you know, private electronic device, so that you can inadvertently commit a violation of the law, that might be one way to do it. Otherwise, as adults and, and members of council and sophisticated people that you are, you might just, you know, understand where your duties are and manage yourself accordingly.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Demakia. Um, I'm probably one of those people that on occasion I've had my personal phone here, and that's because I have 10 grandchildren, I've got an 80-year-old husband who has health issues, and if I need to look at my phone, if there's something going on, not necessarily anything to do with city business, but to make sure my loved ones are okay, um, I'm still, well, my, my time is up, but, um, there's nothing wrong with making sure that in the event of an emergency, you may have a phone that vibrates to let you know that there is a personal emergency. As long as you're not conducting city business, um, you know, things happen, people need to leave, so, or be aware of something. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nutt?
Thank you, Mr. Future. Yeah, no, I, uh, I mean, I'm gone in December too, so this doesn't affect me, and I think, you know, we're, you know, all council members are adults, and the incoming council members as well can conduct themselves appropriately. Um, my concern though, as I do see, uh, as, uh, Ms. Kempden did raise, is my concern is more the potential liability that it does create for the city, and even, uh, more directly, I guess honestly, like the records requests and the issues and the timeframe spent on that. Now, obviously, future council can regulate themselves however they see fit, but my concern abs, absolutely goes towards the liability, and then I, the law department, the council clerks, always, you know, working on pulling all those record requests for any issues that may have been seen, and maybe that won't be an issue going forward if there's no live stream, but we'll see. So, I mean, that's my concern. So thank you.
Best advice that Law ever gave anybody is just don't use it.
Yeah.
Keep it away. Ms. Velc?
Yes, I was just going to agree with, um, Mrs. Kempden and Mr. Nutt. Uh, I understand everybody has hard times in their life sometimes, but we were able to get along without cell phones for a long time, a long time in my lifetime. But I just think for this hour, hour and a half, two hours that you're here, that you should concentrate, because it just opens up more problems where people think you're having all these private conversations. I mean, the mayor can attest to this, if you're in a courtroom, you didn't have the phone on, the judge would go nuts. So, I mean, I never worked with having my phone, um, sorry I'm boring you, Mr. Demakia, but, um, I never worked with my cell phone when I was in a meeting or in the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Springowski?
Yes. This is an iPad, and this is what I take my notes on. It's an, it's a personal electronic device, but I have notes from, and I download every agenda, every meeting I come to, I come to the zoning planning commission, all of that, demolition board of appeals, all of that, all of my personal notes, which I take from my own remembrance, are on this, and this is a personal electronic device, and I'm not turning it off. I'm an 87-year-old father, and I, my husband happens to be here with me, but, I did get a phone call from my dad tonight, and I silenced it, and that, because he'll, he'll call back again if it's an emergency. But I take care of my dad, and I'm going to go rogue on this. I am going to keep writing in my iPad, and I am going to keep my phone here in case my father needs me, because I've had, I've left this meeting before due to a family emergency or that. I did it when my mom was dying, and I will continue to do that. I am a part-time council person, I have a family outside of here, I have grandchildren, I have children, and I have my father and my husband, and this job is never going to supersede my care for them, and if somebody has a problem with that, they can do a records request. I got a message from Angela Royo tonight that I had read into the record, I sent a screenshot of it, so that it could be part of the record, because I understand the sunshine laws and what my requirements under the law are. I'm not using it as a crutch to go and curtail somebody's ability to have their personal life. This job doesn't supersede our personal life, and I think that right now we're being a little bit big brother on this sort of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Velc? I'm sorry. Uh, Ms. Duval?
Yes, isn't that addressed in section B here, under number two, use of privately-owned electronic devices? It says that if you, um, document the functions of his or her public office, you'll do this, you'll retain the electronic messages in accordance with city council records retention schedule, and forward such electronic messages to the corresponding city-owned cellphone, personal laptop, or tablet. Isn't that, isn't, does that solve the problem of her, uh, having her person, her notes or whatever, re, um, as part of the public record? Does that solve the problem?
I'm not required to, my personal notes, I'm not required to, to give a specific data. But I'm allowed to take them with my clothes for calls. They're getting the customer in the info. I didn't know.
Thank you, Ms. Kempden.
Um, just to, just to follow up on it, um, there hasn't been any other council person, um, in this body that understands more what a family emergency is, but I would say that I'm able to give my city number to my family for two hours, and that we ask lawyers and judges and anyone in the court upstairs to put their phone away, we also ask the children of this city to put their phones away, so that they can concentrate and learn too. So I, I don't think it's a big ask to say, just concentrate on the job that you've been hired to do. Thank you.
Seeing no other lights, I will now turn to the public.
Again, Patrick Corn, um, the last thing I'll, I'll go first, uh, just, you know, just so everyone knows, the whole legality of the rules, and I'm sure Mr. Slesky or Mr. Riley could find something wrong, but I'm just, I'm just going to pick on Mayor Bradley and, uh, Secretary for a minute here. If they decide to use their personal cell phones, hey, we're going to offer drinks afterwards, that's public record. No, okay, it's not. They can, can they afford that and ask that, or no? I'm not sure how that works. Can they ask that question if you use your personal, your business cellphone for that? Is that, and also, uh...
Mayor, Mayor said he doesn't drink.
Well, it's, it's just, and, but, personal is personal and business is business, but anyway, and here I'm saying, with this Rule 47, uh, as most of you all know, right now we've had some issues with individuals challenging Rule 47. We would implement these rules because they're going to sit here, they're going to challenge our, the rules of the council, that's what they're going to do about it, so they're going to sit there and continue to challenge rules of council and disrupt the meetings, and we got something about that, too, as you said, because the last time we were in here, this, this issue happened, I think they did a great job doing it, you know, uh, Councilwoman Springowski and President, I thought they had, did it the right way, but those two individuals sat in here and challenged the council, and then said, well, we're going to see if you don't, if you don't let us speak. But it says in the Rule 47 about the misdemeanors, we need to start enforcing those, because otherwise they're going to consider, they're going to continue to do what they're supposed to do, and make this meeting hard for us to do. So just a thought.
Thank you.
Um, I'd just like to ask the council to consider in the rules to have public comment placed after the resolutions are discussed, as it would be more relevant to a public comment, because a lot of times we don't know, uh, how it's going, but I would have a comment after the discussions of council took place, or the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I will go back to council and Ms. Velc?
Yeah, my question is on 47, um, or 47, why do we ever get to the point where people are charged to disrupt these meetings? I mean, we don't have to arrest them in chambers, but we could charge them, right? Correct. So I guess that would be for law. Why don't we go that final step to really put some teeth into that rule, that you can't just come in and just disrupt meetings?
Mr. Riley?
The process by which prosecutions commence is not the law department deciding to charge someone, more so city council deciding to charge someone. There is a established process. That process requires a finding of probable cause. The finding of probable cause is initially made by the law enforcement agency that conducts the investigation, thereafter reviewed by a judge determining sufficiency. So it's not a matter of why don't we charge someone, it's a matter of whether the process has been properly invoked, and otherwise that takes itself through the procedures required by law to determine that someone should be charged. We just don't charge someone.
Well, I'm not saying just charge someone.
Well, that's what you said.
It's not a videotape, the actions that were taken, the begging to leave, they won't leave.
Well, that then becomes a subject of the investigation, and the investigative authority.
Done.
Well, I, I'm not so sure why you would think it is or isn't done.
Because no one's ever been charged for disrupting...
Well, that's not true. That's not, that's not the case. There have been two people charged, and there have been two convictions, Mary.
This year?
The question is whether, no, historically, to date, whether or not there's been an investigation of the more recent incidents is something for the investigative agency to know, for you not to know, because those are matters that are confidential.
Hmm, okay.
Thank you. Ms. Duval?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, that's okay. Ms. Springowski?
Um, I agree with Mrs. Velc in that we need to more clearly define the process. We've been giving them three warnings, uh, two or three warnings, and I think that there should just be the one, one warning, um, and definitely not going all the way up to three warnings, uh, that just seems to bait them, um, and that if a council member requests an immediate recess, then we, we can, um, address it further. But we, we've got to stop with people disrupting these meetings, so that we can get to the agenda at hand, because it basically, um, it's disruption of government services in essence, because we're trying to run a meeting that governs the city. Maybe it's just that the process hasn't always been followed, but we need to, we need to nip it in the bud. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kempden?
I agree with Ms. Springowski 100% on this. I, I don't think that three warnings and you're out is, um, I, I absolutely, I think that we need to start looking at this, we, we represent 63,000 people, and one person coming in here, week after week, or meeting after meeting, to, to come in specifically to disturb a meeting, should not be tolerated. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so the suggestion is that, uh, we issue, just paraphrase it here, we issue one warning, and, uh, the next is that's the pleasure of the body, as opposed to three warnings, and again, I'm just trying to grasp what the suggestions are on this floor, and as always, I will defer to Law, and if we're not prepared to have this conversation, I would suggest that Law, just like they're going to do with some of the other rules, uh, look into it and make a recommendation to our body on what would make the most legal sense. Ms. Springowski?
I would agree, and put it on them. You're welcome, Pat. Oh, and for the record, I just took two extra strength, et cetera, because I'm sure you'll get a public records request on that, but I have a bit of a headache, so, and I took it with diet ginger ale.
No, I can't, no, I just can't.
To the chair, the council, the protocol that was, the protocol that was established was done so, again, as I said earlier, based upon the experiences that the group law department had during the, uh, you know, height of the Israeli Palestinian war in Gaza. The reason why the protocol is established the way it is, is so that you understand this better, not that you don't, but I haven't explained it all to you, because it really never been asked. But it's a matter of being successful ultimately in a courtroom. You might understand that when someone is charged with a crime, the, the condition is based upon a conclusion by a jury or judge, that they are guilty beyond a reasonable doubt. In constructing the protocol that I recommended to you, the foresight was that at some point in time in the future, there may be a charge, and we would like to be able to prove that person guilty. And in order to reach the high bar of guilty beyond a reasonable doubt, the protocol stands as almost irrefutable proof that someone conducted themselves in a way that was disruptive. And so there was, there was a lot of thought put behind the second warning requirement, because at that point, it becomes easier ultimately in a courtroom, when someone is being charged with a crime and may lose their liberty or their money, to prove them guilty beyond a reasonable doubt, because they have been consecutively disruptive on more than one occasion in, in a meeting. And so the reason why this protocol is built the way it is, is to look ultimately to a courtroom, where the prosecutors have to prove someone guilty beyond a reasonable doubt, and the more disruptive quote unquote a person is, the more likely the finding of guilt beyond a reasonable doubt will occur. Now, that's my opinion about what it is that we do for a living as lawyers and prosecutors, and why the protocol was built the way it was, and why it's built the way it is in Cleveland, for the very same reason, because you ultimately want to meet that high bar from guilt beyond a reasonable doubt. It would be arguably less, uh, effective, and arguably, uh, more defensible if it's one warning, and, and whatever, but so, we, the fact that there are two warnings, not three, two, was designed to make it easier to prove ultimately in a courtroom, if a person is charged, that they in fact were disrupting the public meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Ms. Duval?
Yes, um, this protocol will work if city council will step up. Um, if the president is, is not addressing... If the president is, is not addressing issues, we can always do a point of order and force him to address this. But he can't, we can't go into recess until he has said twice to them to sit down and shut up. And then it's, there was some confusion in the last time because we hesitated to move to recess. It, it, we got to work together as a team to solve this problem. And that means that city council has to be alert and willing to step, step out there and say, you know, Mr. President, point of order, whatever. The protocol is very plain, but you got to do it.
Thank you. Okay, great discussion, great suggestions and recommendations. Uh, I will say this, the only other thing that, uh, to Mr. Vell's point also, and I know that the administration and law department are working on it, is the issue of authority of the chamber. Uh, so just keep in mind that they are working on that because it does create a gray area for, uh, accountability and enforcing our rules in this particular, uh, part of this facility. So they are working on that and that will come up later. But I will need a motion, once amended and completed of, uh, this legislation, I will need a motion to send it back to council for consideration. Ms. Vell?
So moved.
Oh, Mr. Vell, you cannot, uh, Ms. Kempden?
Uh, I can get my own chain.
Thank you. I need a second. Ms. Henley?
Support.
All those in favor? Any objections? Good, you're not in the committee at all, man. Thank you all for being here this evening and your patience and, uh, good conversation. Thank you.